Okay, I have six P M. I'd like to call the order the Planning and Zoning and Historic Commission Special Meeting of Monday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Franco, can you take the role?
Sure. Member Feck.
Here.
Member Lilian Reyes-Broder.
Here.
Member Stenick. Here.
Chair Brunner. Here.
Member Scarpelli.
Here.
Member Myers.
Here.
And member Kruger.
Here.
Great, hundred percent, we got a forum, so let's move on to the next order of business, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment on agenda or non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to our new business, and the first item of our new business is a Historic Commission discussion in regards to the property at two ten North River Street and modifying their fascia boards for gutters and removing three inoperative masonry chimneys prior to re-roofing. May I have a motion to open the discussion regarding the certificate of appropriateness for two ten North River Street?
A motion.
A second.
Motion and a second.
Uh, Feck.
Yes.
Reyes-Broder.
Yes.
Stenick.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kruger.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have the property owner here?
Yes.
Yes, it looks like we do.
Howdy, guys.
So, and yeah, we don't need a swearing in for this, right?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, but if you could state your name.
Cliff Sergeus, owner of two ten North River Street.
Great, thank you.
And it's a, I think I'm very comfortable from Franco to this side of the room, I know everybody, but you folks I've not met before, pleasure, thank you. We've owned the building for eight or so years. We've spent an enormous amount of time, effort, money, taking something that was just about ready for the wrecking ball and putting her back into service. We were here three, four years ago before, right before Covid. We did receive the, the grant to help with the facade. We were able to do all of the siding at that time, did some masonry work, but you know, redid the fence on the front, historic looking. We didn't do the fascia and soffit at that time because we were really struggling to get the building, the H B A C balanced out. If anybody knows the building, she is half in the dirt and half out of the dirt for the first floor, and that's the brick portion, but the upstairs portion is a frame portion. There's only one heating plant in it, it's only like sixteen hundred square feet, but trying to get that all balanced out took a trip, we wound up going with a split air system, which is, which is working fabulously, but at the time, we weren't sure what type of soffit and soffit and fascia and venting we wanted to put there, or what we were going to need if we were running new lines and stuff like that. I'm happy to report, everybody that works there is pleased as punch with the way the new system works, and it's just time to get it done, but the concept is to just finish what was started, which is using the hardy board product on the fascia and soffit, and when I brought that up to Chris and said, do I need a new permit, or am I still under the old permit, or how do I do this? And he goes, what are you doing? I said, I just want the gutters not to be dangling because this fascia kicks back this way, and we'll throw a triangle on it and make it straight so they anchor properly. And, and he goes, that's it? And I said, well, that's never it. There are two chimneys on the building that just, they're dinosaurs, they've been there for a hundred years, they are, everything is vented, power vented out the side, they are, they are not functional in any way, we would just like to take them off the roof, you know, plywood that tar paper over it and get a new roof put on there. But then that leads to a whole nother series of questions, which we would like to upgrade to a product that is more substantial looking. We could go with the asphalt layered, you know, architectural looking shingles, but quite honestly, I think this product is absolutely gorgeous. It looks like slate, but it's plastic. It'll outlive any of us, it's wonderful. Except I don't like the cutoff on the edges. I'm not there yet, and we have a rep coming out saying, if we can get an acceptable edge rather than a cutoff edge on that, then I would like to go with this product, which is different than the asphalt shingle, so I guess this is the appropriate place to come and say, we'd like a chimney off, a slate looking roof on, and we'd like to do the fascia and soffit with gutters that are anchored properly and take it from there. I don't, sort of the roofing material, I don't think we're asking for anything that we weren't here asking for before. That's all I got.
Cliff, are the, the lower ones, they're finished on the ends, right?
Frank, I don't get how it works because it, what, they're only finished because it's the square they are. This one is a square, but it had to be cut, so what if you have to cut it at the edge?
They should sell something that they provide.
I'm sure they do, I just don't know what it is, but that's not, that wouldn't fly to me, I'm a little anal, I'm a little, you know, obsessive compulsive, that would be a fly.
They would probably put a finished edge on each edge of the roof, and then somewhere in the middle, you'd have two, you'd have two cutoffs next to each other.
Yeah, I think that would probably be acceptable, but I'm just, I just, if we're going to come once, I'm saying, this is the product, I don't like this, if we can come to a resolution on it, I would like to use this, if not, we'll just go with, you know, whatever the architectural book built up shingles are, in black, but yeah.
So, for question, Franco, was this in the packet?
I don't believe so.
So, is that an issue?
Chris.
I don't think it's an issue, no, because he wants, he wanted to redo the roof.
Right.
So, that was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the intent is from the fascia and soffit, oh, just finish this off.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, the original material wasn't asphalt shingles, right? These are probably shake roofs, you know?
Back then?
Back then.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've already lost that a long time ago.
And then nineteen, tens, twenties, they went to slate.
Okay.
So, we're going, we're going in the right direction with making it look like it's back in the day.
Charles.
So, in terms of color, does that match, sorry?
Go ahead.
Does that match close to what was there now, or is this a little darker?
Oh, gosh, that's a great question. I would think that if you laid this up there and took a hundred feet back, it would be right there.
You couldn't tell.
It's, I would love to tell you, oh, no, it's a triple black roof. It's, it's a gray, black.
Maybe it was black when you put it up.
This was a McNamie building back in the day, and, and we took over after Tom's passing, and, and bought it from the estate, so I'm not, I can't even tell you that all the roofs are the same batch from then.
That's very possible.
But it will be when we're done.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I think there's a little flat section in the front that sits under the, over the balcony on the front, we won't be redoing that right now because there's just no reason to do that, but all of the shingles stuff we'd like to do, start with the fascia and soffit, but if the guys are coming out, it's the same construction crew that will take off the bricks and patch the roof and then move on, so.
Okay, and, and you said really, the, you know, I, I have a house in town that has the same type of roof as your, your building, you know, with the molding underneath it, and I have a similar type of gutters that, that you presently have with the straps, so what, what don't you like about the straps? Just, does it look like they move too much in the wind, or?
I would just like the water to roll off the roof, go through the gutter, go down the downspout, run away from the building, and I can't get it to do that.
Okay.
They don't pitch right, they float with the wind, it's, it's not.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a, I don't think that those gutters were intended for the design of that fascia.
Okay, yeah.
And somebody has tried to retrofit them, and I don't have an answer. Somebody mentioned the old copper cup gutters, yeah, that's, I mean, that's not what we did on the original building.
So, that could have been, yeah, an installation issue. I mean, you know, it's the, the one thing, I mean, you do have an original roof with that original trim done the nice way, and you're going to keep that on the front, the way that the roofline looks, or are you going to modernize the fascia all the way?
It'll be, it'll be the, the same boards that have been installed here will be put on the fascia, so, yeah, I mean, it'll.
But no, on the gable end, are you, on the gable end that has no gutter, are you gonna, are you gonna leave?
No, 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 I don't know anybody that gutters on a gable.
No, no, no.
What he's asking.
He's talking about the style.
Are you going to remove this, this, this section?
Yes, it'll be fascia board.
So, yeah, so he's going to remove all the, the colored trim.
So, it'll pretty much match what has been done on Heinz's building and on Keller Kitchen.
Yes.
Yes.
And are those buildings, older buildings, or those newer buildings?
The Keller Kitchen building, Joe, Joe Heinz's building, early eighties, and the Keller Kitchen building, I think, was remodeled about fifteen years ago.
Is that two oh six? Keller Kitchen, this way here.
Keller's on the corner.
Keller's on the corner.
You're south, right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, this is, this is the, this is the Heinz lumber.
Yeah, that's the Keller. Okay, still south, okay.
Yeah, but also, the Anvil Club has it squared off, and just about every other building, I think, has it squared off. The Depot doesn't, the Depot has the old fashioned gutters with the strips, his don't have strips, his are regular, modern gutters, just kind of attached to that little bit of a angle there.
We've had people out there, your public group's been out, everybody's been out there tacking stuff back up going, please hold, please hold.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, it was a bad install job, for sure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'll say in regards to this, you know, we have a lot of homes that have this style in, in our town that have that type of roofing, which I believe is part of a look that's common, especially on the gable. You know, when, when I came to this meeting, I thought you were just going to have a little attachment to brace the gutters on the side, and you would keep the woodwork, you know, through the gable, more or less like the drawing was in the.
If there, if there was a way to, I'll meet you halfway, if there's a way on the gable to affix a FIPON product that might look, you could twist my arm into that.
FIPON products are great.
Yeah, but you couldn't, I would, I would really do everything I could to convince you that there's, there's no value to hiding that piece of crown molding behind the gutter, it's actually detrimental to the.
Yeah, I'm fine with the behind the gutter.
Okay.
It's the, on the front, when you look at the front of this building, right, and right now, you see that nice, pretty gable with the, the two layers of molding going to then the soffit underneath it, that look will totally change, you know, when you.
Well, it won't be purple and yellow anymore, that's for sure.
But, you know, it will, it will have a different feel, and it won't.
Yeah, but I'd, I'd be happy to see if we can overshoot the actual roof product by an inch or two.
Yeah.
And see if there's a FIPON product that would fit in the front to go up, that would look appropriate, I'd be happy to try that.
I guess I'm not familiar with the FIPON.
Oh, FIPON is an extruded, it's like a denser type of foam board, but denser, more for outdoors, it's very used heavily all over, all over the nation, pretty much.
Yeah.
It's more expensive, but I usually, I usually use it more for decorative purposes.
All of our windows are FIPON.
And they're painted.
You, you guys approved the FIPON for the front of the building all over, yeah.
So, are you saying like a FIPON board?
Well, you, you could get it like either continuous, or you could get like the dental type of design, they have several, many, many different.
All this would, all we'd be looking for is a crown molding piece, if you will.
Okay, so.
I don't know if you're an architect.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
A crown molding piece of a FIPON meeting a foam product that will never rot.
Yeah, yeah.
But it won't be structural, it's just pretty.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we can paint it to match the hardy board and put it up there, and I think that will achieve what you're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, it's my opinion, right, I'm one of the commissioners.
And the fact that.
Someone else disagree.
And the fact that it's a foam product, the foam product is up high, just like the roofing material, it's foam, so you're not close enough where you could tell it's plastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I, I use those products, so.
In the years that we've been there, nobody has come up to us and said, oh, your window arches are FIPON, you should, nobody said that. I don't think they're going to say it for something that's even higher level, but I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, 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 well, I mean, that makes me, at least personally, much more comfortable with the change because.
Can we do that just on the front and not on the back, though? I mean, it's a parking lot, does anybody really care? I mean, we'll do it to the front without any issue.
As long as, yeah, we keep that nice feel that.
Yeah, because I think then, I just have to think like, because it'd be like a normal, you know, fascia, it, it would change the look of it, I think, from the street.
Happy to.
So, uh, so, yeah, so, and then on the back, I, I don't mind.
Yeah, more than reasonable.
Agreed, I second that.
Okay, okay, so, so FIPON front, I don't know who takes notes or approves this, but we'll do something in the gable on the front, the rest of the stuff can go as presented, we can take the chimneys off of the roof and replace it, and we'll let Mr. Rannieri know if we, you can come out and meet with the guy and say, can we get a corner that doesn't look like a cutoff? If, if we can't do that, we just go with the architectural built up shingles.
Yeah, and we're all good with the chimneys?
Anyone have any comments on the chimneys?
No, no comments.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good.
More of a safety.
Yeah. We're not quite there yet, but we're, it's not peeling itself, you know, we have to intervene, so.
Eventually, they're going to tackle on you. Cliff, not that this matters, do you know, do you know how much that costs per hundred square feet?
I don't, but we're going to categorize it as a shit ton more than asphalt shingle.
It's.
I don't know what to tell you, it's expensive, I'm glad it's a small roof.
Yeah, the only reason I, I say that is if, if you don't go with that, Certain Teed makes a grand manner shingle, that's a big heavyweight shit, it's like five bundles per hundred square feet, whereas a typical is three bundles per hundred square feet, but it looks like a slate, it looks, it actually looks like slate, so you might want to consider that, too.
I think we should have cocktails and continue that discussion. I don't, I'm, seriously, I'm looking for something that, the board, I, I have deep roots here, I want somebody to walk past my building and say, he did it right. I don't want a call from Mr. Rose or saying, hey, you cheap skate, you didn't, you know, I don't, we're in the community, I just want you all to say, hey, here's the models that we're looking for, so whether it's here or the one in West Dundee or whatever, this is what we're looking for, so.
Looks good.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
I don't want the chamber getting mad at me.
So good.
So, I believe that's the, that's everything, so we, we're comfortable on the, the gutters with this FIPON on the gable, front gable.
Yes.
Removing the three inoperative masonry chimneys.
There's only two.
Two.
Okay.
Isn't there one on the side, in the back?
Yeah, is that, no, there's, there's no reason to take that off.
So, it's the two, it's like cinder block.
Oh, it's a cinder block?
You can call it three.
The cinder block one, yeah, that.
A cinder block.
Yeah, and then the idea would be, are the two that are on the, in the main structure, they're just right at the peak of the roof right now?
Yes.
Yeah, so just go below and you'll have it just, and just a continuous peak, yeah, okay.
Okay, Chris came in, Chris is coming and inspected, there's, they're not structural, they're not, they're just, they're going to be problematic, you know, right now, just to keep the birds out is the best we're doing.
Okay, so could I, I think then, have a motion to approve or deny the issuing of the certificate of appropriateness?
Second.
So, actually, I should, you, you would have to add all of the, the conditions that we want to put on it.
Okay.
So, if you want to withdraw that.
I, I could withdraw.
Because we didn't vote on it, I think that's okay. So, if you want to make it again later, just, and then add the, the gable piece, or if you want me to say I deny it, I can say.
Okay, go ahead, you second it, because it was, there's a lot of work that you're doing, which I appreciate, so.
We don't want to work the denying any of this, just rescind and remove and re-motion.
Yes, so, could I have a motion then to approve, well, a motion to issue the certificate of appropriateness for proposed fascia boards and roof alterations to two ten North River Street, as referenced in our packet with the additional amendment of adding a FIPON product on the front of the building, the.
Front gable, street.
Yeah, yes, the river, street side facing gable. I would second that.
Okay. Well, isn't there?
Oh, you need someone to make the motion.
Well, isn't there chimneys?
And remove the chimneys.
And remove.
And the shingles. Well, I said as referenced in the packet with the one amendment.
Well, the shingles are different.
Yeah, the shingles are different, okay. Okay, so then, let's let that one just die. No one second that one.
You have to try.
Yeah, you give it a shot.
Okay, I will make a motion that we issue a certificate of appropriateness for the property at two ten North River Street, with the roof product to be either the slate as shown here tonight, or a asphalt shingle if the slate does not meet the owner's desires for the, for the ends of the shingle product. Also, on the gable end facing River Street, that will maintain somewhat of a crowned look with a FIPON product, and then the owner will be able to remove the chimneys on top of the roof of two ten North River Street, and he will be able to, on both the north, south, and east facing edges of the roof, be able to put the flat soffit and gutter on that would allow for proper adhesion of the gutters.
I would second that. Yes.
Briz Broder.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Feck.
Yes.
Kruger.
Yes.
Stenick.
Yes.
Scarpelli.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, and Chris, if you don't mind, I'll call you and see what permits we need to put together and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you, and you can leave if you would like. Okay, moving on to our next item, and I, I think, you know, we did a motion to open up the previous one, but I don't think we, we need to, since we're just going to start with the discussion and then go to the motion, when we decide to approve or deny. So, this will be a, a discussion around the changes to three oh nine Meyer Street that we were hearing previously in a previous meeting, so this will be the follow-up, and we do have new material. Can I see, we have Colin here? Would you like to present any of the changes that you've made since the, the last time we, we last spoke?
Hi, I'm Brian, my other name, so.
Okay, fantastic.
It'll be perfect for him to answer questions for you guys, but tried to throw some of the images on there, I tried to get the exact siding piece today, was not able to, couldn't get it from Chicago, it was coming in, will have it tomorrow, but it hasn't helped tonight. I was going to try to get another piece from somewhere local, but it's not the same product. Went to Home Depot, went to, when I was in Crystal Lake, it's not the same product, so I didn't want to provide something that wasn't what it is, but, you know, got the imagery out there, kind of the look of it, you know, where it's going to go, kind of excited about it, and hoping, rock and roll from there, and ready to go, I know the Anvil Club has closed down, and I'm excited to start boarding, we'll have the, the interior drawings and design done to get that proposed so that we can start construction, so.
Great, and then if your architect could introduce himself, so we have his name on record.
My name's Brian Cortez.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just here to answer questions, I was in a previous meeting, so I'm just kind of working with Colin's direction, and he has informed me about what happened at the last meeting, and we just kind of made some, some small changes, we've switched the location of the ramp, I think it makes more sense to have the ramp where it's located now because of a few things, where it was shown before previously, there was only about three and a half feet of sidewalk left where that ramp was, so, and I believe you're looking for more like five feet of actual, you know, bigger sidewalk area, whereas now, we have closer to six feet of sidewalk area, the ramp will be the three foot between the handrails, it's, it does, you know, I know there's a bit of a concern about the doors, but as you can see from the, the drawing, you know, it doesn't really have too big of an impact on them, we're going to keep the, the wall of the ramp as low as possible. The nice thing about having it come from the north side of the entry, though, is that it lines up fairly well with the handicap parking spot that is right there, so in terms of, you know, ease of access to the front door from the handicap parking stall, it's just great for that. We don't have issues with where it was located before on the south with, you know, conflict with the overhead door that Colin also put in the side.
Is the stucco the same product that's on the Maple and Hash building?
Correct.
Okay, I, I went over there and took a look at that, that, I like the way it looked.
Thank you. The diagrams, the, the clips of pictures of the existing restaurants are trying to illustrate the idea of the manual effect that we're looking for over the overhead door, over the two doors in the two-story facade, so that's kind of the idea there, and then there's a wood heavy cap that we want to show on the two wings on either side of the two of the two stories facade, and also trying to, you know, illustrate that with the photograph. The photograph also shows the railing, the kind of railing idea between the columns and the stone bases for the opening patio dining area, so that was the idea behind those images, just to kind of give you a feel for.
So, you're saying the railing in this bottom?
Yes.
That would be the thing?
Yeah.
Like a single color, or, I guess that is a single orange, all this is orange?
Yeah, and then that was, that's just a, you know, idea, I think colors are still, you know, we're not a hundred percent sure on the red.
Yeah, correct, it's going to be a, a generic color, it won't be something that's going to stick out.
Is that wood, the one in the picture, or is that like a steel, the painted railing?
I think it's a steel railing, steel railing.
Yeah, it looks painted, mm-hmm.
But I think for purposes of this project, it would be more of a wood, simple wood.
Uh-huh, like a square.
Have you seen, if you've gone to Maple and Hash, in Dundee?
Yeah.
Patio there. Similar exterior.
The purple.
Yeah, if you see the planer boxes, and you see the wooden, the Vs in front of it, that's exactly how it looks.
I do like the heavier wood caps that you added, that's a nice feature, I like that, it complements the rest of the building.
And with the ramp switch, did you lower the actual, was there like originally a stone wall for the outside of the ramp, and now you're doing this railing to?
Right, it was just a little bit of curved edge to the outside edge, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's to minimize and obviously, you know, it actually looks very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, I think that looks a lot better, you know, this way, you know, I mean, we, we talked about it at the previous meeting, but, you know, we're, we're, I think, all visualizing flipping the ramp that was over there, and it was going to be, you know, covering two and a half feet of the door, so, yeah, this looks, I think, looks a lot better.
The placement of the ramp works well, mm-hmm. The only issue that I see is like if you're a handicapped person going up the ramp, that turning radius at the top of that landing, you know, you could easily, if you're a handicapped person in a wheelchair, you could roll over. What was the intention, can we maybe like flip the door the other direction, still maintain that push and pull as you're coming up or down the ramp?
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Per ADA, I mean, you could discuss it with Felicia from the State of Illinois, ADA.
Yeah, right now, yeah, because the door opens into the ramp as it's presently drawn.
Well, and you know what, that, that's, that's allowed, actually.
Yeah.
The door swing can be a turn radius of the landing, so it's not really technically an issue, but, I mean, I can see.
Yeah, it's just, it's, yeah, there isn't a lot of room on the landing.
Flip the door.
I would recommend, yeah, the State of Illinois ADA Department be reached, and you could have a conversation and email Felicia for input. I have her email address.
You really want to get close to this.
If we really want to make sure that, for the client's liability reasons, for ADA accessibility, to reach out to the State of Illinois, Felicia's the main contact, to make sure that, that would be something that's acceptable.
Okay, yeah, it will have to be ADA compliant, if this drawing isn't, then they'll have to modify it a little bit, but, yes, we could, we will work with them on that when they
Yeah, I know. I've spoken with her many times.
You could send me her phone number or email?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Are you able to extend that railing, maybe another three or four feet on top of the landing? And then people walking up would, you could almost remove the steps underneath there and then just have the steps more to the south around the corner.
Well, I think, you know, aesthetically though, if you're looking at the front entry, you know, that would kind of look.
Yeah.
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 Your front door.
Yeah.
I think that would maybe not be quite so attractive.
Yeah, in the end, I think we need, you know, some, some expert to say what they think about it. I mean, it's, you know, I'm looking at the drawing there, like, a person coming up that ramp, like, how they have to navigate on top of that patio to get it, I mean, that platform to get into the door. If they're in a wheelchair, they'll have to come up, you know, come all the way around with the door closed. And then, you know, go pretty close potentially to that edge and then wait at that edge as the door's open to come in. You know, that's, that's.
That's the liability.
Yeah. You know, if the door opened the other way, they could.
Quick question, just to kind of diffuse that is, so if we move the door, so say, say I switch the doors.
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to get, I'm hoping for you guys to accept that this is okay. We can move the door and we move work, because the architectural design and the ADA requirements has nothing to do with.
Yeah, if you move the door, the door swing.
The view of the building, and that's what I'm just asking. So, uh, I, I'm an, I have a wheelchair accessible person in my ass. I want it to be as accessible as possible and if this doesn't work, I'll adjust the door and change it the way that has to be. And if it's ADA requirement and is it functionality, I'll change that and adjust it.
Yeah. And yeah, clearly this isn't a historic comment as much as just a safety comment, you know, you know, that's, you know, so, yeah, we wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest, you know, not approving it from a historic perspective because of that, but it does look a little maybe tricky. But cool. Do you have other comments? I know you really liked the old limestone platform before.
Yeah, the old limestone platform, but I understand the issue with handicap. There was no other route that you could find for an ADA person to access the building? Were you successful with that or was it?
I think, I think the key is that, you know, in that it's located closest to the handicap park in front. And Colin's desire to have it, you know, as part of the front entry, you know, so that it's readily accessible for everybody. So I think that's really the key was just.
I think in the last meeting, we discussed a couple of different opportunities. I think they're obviously coming on the side door right now currently. The issue is, is like, for example, like I was, I was trying to justify changing it and justifying different options, but for example, say I have a party in this room, say it's a reception, say it's a wedding party or something like that. And then I have to tell this party, just wait time out one second, I gotta move a wheelchair through the restaurant to get people in here. And, you know, for example, I, you know, I got married seven years ago. Not that I would be upset about, but my wife would probably be pretty upset about disrupting her party or maybe she's speaking or talking. So I'm trying to make it use of operation to try to, I guess, win everyone over and try it every day. It's a difficult thing to do.
It is.
And that, that makes a lot of sense that you'd, oh, I'm sorry, that you would use that room for a party room. I mean, I think that's often what it was used for, an anvil being out that way and kind of private from the rest of the restaurant. So I totally get that, that desire. So I have a question in regards to the, the stone facing. Did you end up talking, either of you with Tom, about the yellow bricks that he often puts on his buildings? And if those were a possibility for you guys to use on, on this building?
Yeah, looked at it. I just, I don't believe that it's gonna look as good as, it's not gonna, the building's gonna be the same exact building as the existing buildings around.
Yes, right. It would look like the other buildings in our historic district.
You know, I, I'll be honest, as a restaurant owner, I, I would, I won't move forward if it goes in that direction. In the aspect of I'm concerned of the same exact issue that I've taken over restaurants before. If there isn't a decent change in the building, the building will not move. One of the big, Anvil Club's been there for how many years?
1956.
1956.
And it's, it's been there. I wouldn't say it's been extraordinarily successful. Yes, it's been successful in some aspects, but yes, there's also some owners that have had the building and have lost money in the building and kept it alive. So I, I look at Maple and Hash too as a perfect example, right down the street from you guys. It's successful. And knock on wood, it's been successful and it stays that way. And the reason why it's been successful, and I laughed a lot, I told you guys a story, the first time a customer walked in last time I was here. It's because the building changed. And if the building doesn't change, there's still people to this day that think the Anvil Club is a pub, or is a private club. Right? Needs a little bit of a change. And I think that the change that's being expressed is a change that still is gonna blend with the, the community. And it's not gonna be something that's gonna be drastic. And it's gonna be a great blend to the community and, and it's gonna be another asset to make the city more successful with all the other. You know, you guys have a great future. That's the reason why I'm here, is to throw a few guys in.
So I have some comments to make on that. I don't know if other folks would like to talk prior.
I'm good.
So, and this is gonna be me just speaking as a commissioner, not like as the chair, just my, my take on, on this situation. Which is, I've seen your Maple and Hash. I believe it is a beautiful building. It's done really well. It's the best next look, you know, in, in any of the years I've been here. But, you know, I look also at our, our situation with this, this building, which, you know, it has been a continuous operating business for 70 years. You came in and you saw that was very successful, or not, not successful as a restaurant, but the area's up and coming. And there's an opportunity maybe to get some more value out of that, that, that building. We have all of the other buildings in that particular area kind of match this old look that we, we have in our town. And to me, I don't see a reason yet to have to move away from that. You know, there hasn't been any other operator who tried to run something different, a different concept with the look. It's been one look, one business model, one thing the whole time. So we're, we're here to protect, I feel my job is to protect the historic aspect. It's where the historic commission. And I'm trying to stand up for the, the other residents in town who do love our downtown district. And I, I feel very strongly in protecting the way, you know, things that have either, the way they have looked, which has been a clappard sided building its whole entirety, or in our charter, we can improve the look in the, in the line of the, the historic area, which the Dundee Brick to me is an upgrade over a clappard siding. We've done that in other places. So I, I really love your passion and I love your, your willingness and seeing the, how great things are going here in Dundee. And I just, it, it, to me, it seems, you know, the, the desire you express seems to be incompatible with the historic district, in my opinion. You know, it shouldn't need to pop. It should blend in and, and there should be something that works, like the other buildings that blend in. So that's my position. I know, and we, we disagree.
No, no, hey, I'm.
You know.
I strongly agree with that as well. I think there's other ways that we could still make it fit without having all this stone, because it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. But, you know, if there's other materials, the hardy plank board works good too. Like I, I really did like that heavy tone of that natural wood that you started to introduce. How about you did something like that on the facade? Or play with different patterns or directions of that, you know, still keep within that flavor of the community.
Luckily he's one of the guidance.
I'm looking straight at it.
I'll make a comment that I disagree with both of you. Tom Roser brought that yellow brick to town 10 years ago.
Yep.
And he's put it on every building he owns. He puts it on every building he owns in the Chicago area. So, I know, I, I do agree, we do need to protect the historic look, but I don't believe that this is not historic looking as well. They're not our buildings. They're, they, they're owned by other people and other people should be able to do with their buildings as they wish within the era of time that we're trying to protect. So I believe that this falls in line with the era of time and it's his choice, not ours, as to what he puts on.
Then why are we here?
That's my feeling. What's that?
We're here to present, you know, to try to conserve. I know what you're saying, but.
Well, we're, we're here to protect an era of time. We're not here to protect a look. Again, Tom Roser put that look on without certificates of appropriateness.
When did he do that?
What?
When did he do that?
The, the, the building at.
What, no, what year? Like, was it like in the 80s or what?
No, within the last 10 years.
That's 10 years.
Well, the, well, the, the 310 Barrington Building. Big new building.
The big new building, yes. And, and the medical supply building. I mean, both of those were built within the last 10 years.
Yeah, and I think they, oh.
I did find the certificate of appropriateness for what he did at 309.
309, but not, not for?
I didn't look for that one because we weren't looking, but I, on the Anvil Club, they did go through the process of getting a certificate of appropriateness for what they did.
Oh, for what they did now, yes. What exists today.
Correct.
Correct, right. No, what I'm saying is, I'm saying on the, on the, the DC Cobb Building.
They, yeah, they did go through that. The DC Cobb Building, that went, yeah, that went through the historic portion also.
Okay, I was on it. I, I don't, I recall certain aspects about the signage and the awning, but not on the, not on the brick.
Not on the brick, the building as a whole.
Right.
Went through the, the process. Yeah, no, I don't know that they were specifying certain colors of brick or.
No, no.
I, I wasn't here at that time. I just know that.
And then, and then Tom also put it on the building that Leo used to have his, his shop in. That, that's also a Tom Roser building.
So, okay, I mean, if you wanna take away the brick and say we just keep it clapper, because that's the closest thing, I can, I can be more restrictive. But this, I, I just, I don't know anything historic that looks like this anywhere.
And plus it's full. Didn't you say it was plastic? Yeah.
It's stone.
Yeah, but it's stone mixed color, mixed dimensions. It looks like something like you would find in a wall, like in a medieval town, like maybe. I don't know. I think it's, it's a, it's a modern representation of what a stone wall might look like. Is kind of the way I look at the pattern personally.
I, I think that this exists all throughout the Southwest. And that's the theme of his restaurant. But I, we're, we're gonna argue all day about our personal beliefs.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Well, I like that. I just don't, I think that color they have now is not doing anything for the town. You don't even know it's there.
Yeah, the brown is.
Just sits there.
Yeah.
Unless you know what the Anvil Club is, you don't ever know, you don't even know what that is. People never even went in there unless they knew it.
Yeah, but now with this veranda opened up, I think it'll be great.
It's, yeah, it's gonna, in the, in the ramp, yeah. Cause I think, wait, wait, can I ask a quick straw poll? Like, we're all in favor of everything, I think unanimously now, other than the siding.
Correct.
Right? You like the ramp as it's done, if the landing can be safe, which you seem very committed to making sure the landing's safe.
Yes, it'll be safe.
Okay. And then, so really it's just this one piece. So, you know, we can talk more about it. Is there any more?
Yeah, I guess the, this coloring is not this coloring. Is this, is there one coloring over another that you're gonna, you're looking to do?
If you pick a color that you like.
Colin, have you considered having everything as, as you wish? You know, putting stucco on the building, it is, you know, you're turning into a cantina, that's totally appropriate for that. But leaving this main structure that when you look at the Anvil Club, you know, they used to make horseshoes there, keeping the siding as is, changing the cutter, the color to your wishes and, you know, attaching it to both sides at what you wish, but leaving the, you're not gonna put stone all the way up there, you know, would you consider that moving forward?
I have no problem with it. I just think that, to be honest, that the siding is horrible.
Yeah, as it color is.
What the community and what you guys are requesting, it looks horrible. So they're trying to get a blend of both worlds of a win-win. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
So.
So yeah, so what?
If that was the case, I guess I could, I'd leave it. It's not gonna, I guess it, it wouldn't really affect the business because there still would be a change.
Right.
Yeah, but it's not gonna please you guys.
Well, okay, let's talk a little bit more about this. Because, yeah, really the side of the buildings, those are new. You know, the, the, only the middle's getting the old.
What I see is like meeting in the middle.
Yeah.
You know, putting a garage door in, awesome, you know, more entrance, that's great. And then you can put that stone up halfway, you're putting stucco on it, put that original main building, you know, where horses used to go in and out and get worked on, all that stuff. Keeping that as our primary example of the store.
But that's not the existing of where, where it was. That's what I'm trying to get at. That's not like, if you take the existing picture of where that, how that look was, the only thing that's still structural is the same as the door. So if the exterior facade used to be, what, 19, it used to be like barn, barn wood or?
He took that down.
But, but I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to.
No, not at all.
And, and I'm not.
Just coming up with an idea.
See.
So you're saying leave, leave the center portion with the,
clapper.
With the, with the clapper look, even though it's a, I mean, it's, it's not the original cedar material or whatever barn siding that was on.
Right.
Just leave what it is and then paint it to some other color.
Paint it whatever color he'd like, but not putting stone all the way up.
Exactly.
It's just an idea that I thought, cause, you know, like, so your enthusiasm is incredible and heck yeah, we want you to build this restaurant.
And I think it, you know, cause we have then the two buildings that look very similar that, you know, to the north. You have the kind of vacant building and then Diamond Gyms, which both have the same front profiles as they have the red and the green. So, and I think all those three together look really nice, especially if this could be something other than brown that like worked.
Yeah.
It's gonna be this, you know, you could, it's like our version of the San Francisco, you know, Victorian houses next to it.
Most definitely.
I could say.
The only thing that I would think there would be to rip it all off and go to like a, like a natural wood and burn it back to the way.
I think that that's bringing it back to the horseshoe days. Personally.
Yeah, the cost of that is, I'm gonna go to the city and say, hey, where are you guys at? Like I said, my goal is to leave the building. If I could, if I could leave tomorrow and start construction tomorrow, I'd walk out of this door and talk to my GC and be like, hey, pound of hammer tomorrow.
Totally. What about like a cedar? You know, just a straight cedar that, that brings it back and kind of, this, my uneducated ideas of a cantina. I don't know, but just not having brick all the way up. Cause say, I know it won't happen, you know, this is gonna be a success. I totally see it. You've done it before, you're gonna do it again. But in five years, if this is gonna change hands, what have you happens? Are we stuck with the cantina look? You know?
Yeah. And that's a, it's a good point. I mean, really, none of our, you know, our Italian restaurant doesn't look like, you know, little Italy. Little Italy. They have a little bit of paint color, but they just kind of updated that a little bit.
But, and I'd say it again, just like meeting in the middle with you so they can all be happy, even though it's hard to do with a bunch of people in one room. But I'm, when I look at this, you know, I look at this as being the old structure and then both of these have been added up totally. And we're altering an old building here by, you know, we're doing that. We know we need to. We know that you need to do it to make this successful. Putting in a garage door, doing what you want with railings in the outdoor area. But looking at the main structure, not doing a stone all the way up, keeping it wood, cedar, you know, the look that we're trying to carry with historic.
So Charlie, if I'm hearing you right. You'd be okay if he could leave it the way it is right now without touching it, just painting it a different color? Or if he wants to take and make it look like it did prior to 1950, he could do that as well?
Yes.
Right. Yes.
Is that okay with you?
I have to break down the cost for it, but yeah, I look at it, but what I'm, the first, the main entrance that you walk in any restaurant.
That's it.
Is the first impression. And I know that the main entrance is a tad bit to the left, because the majority of main entrances would be that front entrance. So there's already an existing issue because the main entrance, if I sit across the street at Aliano's and we could have done this three weeks ago, five weeks ago when they were open, you could sit across the street from Aliano's and there'd be people walking up and down the street, because they don't know where the entrance is. People coming to Maple and Hash at both locations and don't know where the entrance is. Someone walked all the way around the street the other day. They went around the entire block of Maple and Hash. They went around the entire building.
Yeah.
Cause they couldn't find the entrance. The entrance steps out, but that's the existing of it. So that's where, this is probably the most important part of this entire project. If this doesn't pop and it doesn't attract people to it.
I think your signage will help it too. And I think if you, like where you have the main entrance, if you did keep some sort of different material, it'll attract you to it. I don't know, I think you could make it pop without all the stone.
I think the, the stone, it doesn't look that much different from the stone on the rest of the buildings in the downtown. I mean, I think it looks more solid and permanent. And then with your wood caps, it adds a nice accent. I mean, my opinion, I, I like these, these.
I mean, my opinion, I, I, I like these, these two pictures that you have here, if you go with the, like, the light beige stone. I think it's got a more permanent look, and it's attractive. That's just my, my thoughts.
Could I say one thing?
Could you come up to the microphone?
Just quickly, just from my observation, that if you were to go with anything other than what's presented here, with the stone facade in the, in the center portion, the stone waterline feature is gonna get lost, so there's probably no point in doing it. If there's no point in doing that, then there's very little point in what we're talking about, because from an aesthetic standpoint, everything goes away. Now, I don't think that, that, what, uh, as far as what we're gonna be stuck with, Charlie, in five years, if this business goes away, we're not gonna be stuck with cantina look, because every new restaurant that comes in anywhere is gonna have a new facade put on, probably ninety-nine percent of them anyway. So if somebody wants to come in and put in a new business in this building, they're gonna make changes to it anyway. So, I, what I, what I think here, though, is that we wanna try and, and maximize the impact of a new business coming into town, and I think this does it. So, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, and everybody's gonna lament the, the leaving of the animal club. You guys gotta get away from that, man, you know why?
Oh, most definitely. And when, when he brought up people looking for the door, I know back in the day it was supposed to be hidden, there was a button to push to let you in, I mean, it was supposed to be hidden. And they couldn't get away from that.
From, from other conversations that I've had about, with people over the years, I've had just as many people tell me that you gotta get away from that same heavy brick look, because we've got way too much of it in the downtown, as people who have said they liked it. Now, what we're talking about is Diamond Gyms, the green building next to it, and then Animal Club, being all the clappard siding, and it's okay, but it was a quick fix, and to be quite honest with you, I think it's kind of dull.
It's overdone, so, one of the buildings needs to pop.
Yeah.
I think putting.
Right, and I really don't think that doing this, this portion of it, like I say, if you're going to restrict the, the facade change on the center pillar, if you will, the center portion of it, then you're gonna completely lose that waterline and stone feature. It's gonna get lost, and you won't even know it's there.
Could it carry across the center?
Even if it does. I mean, if you even go four feet up all the way across, it's gonna get lost in everything that's above it. It won't stand out, that's my point. But if you tie it in with the whole center portion of what ends up being a third of the facade, then it pulls it in and it stands out. On its own, that waterline feature gets lost in everything that's above it, so.
I see that too, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'm hoping that you'll consider doing this and letting the, the facade as it's presented.
Well, we could do just, oh, see who wants to go with one and wants the other.
Yeah, I'd like to say one more than thing, and then I think that's what we're gonna start doing, is we're gonna start doing motions and see what we can get past and, and what we can't get past. Um, the, uh, the, I think, you know what, that was Jeff Lineham, our village president, speaking. And I think that's what this, he brings to, to me, the point of this, this building, and what you brought up, like, having to take something off. You know, we haven't really gotten in the business in our town of doing per-business sightings for stuff in our historic district. That's, we don't do disposable sightings. We, we haven't done that, and, and this would be setting a precedent of a disposable sighting. We're putting it on to make something pop for a specific business, because that's what they wanted to do. The next person who did come along would say the exact same thing, and we're in this process of.
People keep it in saying about putting a garage door on a historic building.
Yeah, yeah.
We are setting precedent here.
Right, right, I know, I know, they can, and they said we have one at three oh nine, so, you know, if we open it up, it's gonna be a thing, you know, that, that I think we would have to deal with in other cases, and, and for sure, I mean, if someone came in after the fact, you know, the next owner, and they saw this, they'd be like, this clearly isn't historic, I'm gonna put, you know, it's no longer a historic building, I'll put on whatever I wanna put on it, right?
You still have to come here and get approval.
Yeah, if it just gets.
So, I mean, it's not like you just go to wherever you want.
Yeah, it becomes whatever you want, is, is kind of the way I feel.
It'll still be here, though.
Yeah.
Not us, but somebody else.
Yes, yeah, well, well, it'll be in seventy years. You got seventy more years?
Yeah, I do, I'm still baby. No, my grandmother's ninety-nine.
So, um, I think, does anybody have any other, let's say, just general, uh, con, or, or ideas they'd like to get out before we start trying to vote on some motions? And before we do that, I also want to give the, the two applicants a chance to say anything more if they would like to.
No, I appreciate the time. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I appreciate the feedback. Just trying to make it work.
Perfect. So, so, um, okay, so I'm not gonna provide any guidance. You guys can start making motions, and you can see what happens.
A motion we approve what he wants to do.
So that is a motion as presented, to do everything as presented.
Yes.
I'll second that.
A motion to deny it.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, one motion and a second?
So now we have to vote.
Now you gotta vote.
Hold on, some member brought in here? Was that him? Yes, Chairman Brunner?
No.
Where is Brauer?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Feck?
No.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Hanskarpelli?
Yes.
So the motion passes four thirty.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not a.
I mean, you could have.
I'm not a, I can't, I mean, my opinion of what's good and what's not, it's gonna change with everybody, but just like, you know, it works.
Yeah, okay, so with that, we're gonna move on to our other business, discussion and craft, this is just gonna be a discussion again, it'll be about crafting language regarding special use, permit ordinance conditions placed on restaurants, taverns, and brew pubs with live entertainment for the village board to consider.
Is that the noise ordinance?
Yes, so.
Well, kind of.
Well, I thought we decided eleven and.
So what this is, is, um, Steph and the board was looking for a little bit of blanket language to apply to a special use permit ordinance for a business that comes before the P Z H C, and then get the village board hears it for restaurants, brew pubs, or taverns that have live entertainment. So just crafting potentially, if you guys could come up with something, a, a, a uniform statement regarding hours, frequency, setup, that sort of stuff, that can be applied to all applicants under this special use.
Is this indoor or outdoor regardless of where the?
Regardless, per the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
So, but I think, you know, we have, it's like eleven o'clock was the first time, right?
So you're talking about the noise ordinance that the board has passed? Yeah, so what they passed at the other meeting was, um, let's see. The.
Someone in.
The noise, yeah, is, uh, where is it? It's awesome here. Hold on, let me scroll through it. All right. In all zoning districts, the operation of any radio, phonograph, microphone, musical instrument, television, loudspeaker, sound amplifier, commercial music app, affiliate, confation, or reproduction equipment or similar equipment between the hours of ten thirty P M and seven E M, Sunday through Thursday, and between the hours of eleven P M and seven E M for Fridays.
So eleven is Saturday and Sunday?
In such manners to be plainly audible more than fifty feet beyond the property line.
Okay.
So, and Lehman's terms, Friday and Saturday, eleven P M.
Right, at ten thirty. So we already said that, that's already done.
That was approved by the board.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, what we're really gonna be talking about here is the extra language to put into the special uses, uh, so that we can actually have more control than we presently do over, um, let's say, bad actors in town. So there's certain chronic, you know, people who violated the ordinance, and it's really not, so much we can do about it.
So we fine them? We're talking about fining them?
A fine, I'm sorry, what's the topic here?
What is the present, um, impact for someone who gets a notice of.
If they warn them and say, you gotta turn it down, or if over there, and you just say, no, you get a hundred dollar, five hundred dollars?
Police department, it, it escalates. First, it's a warning, if they come back again, they probably ask you to shut it down, if it happens next week, they're gonna say, hey. Well, we're talking about businesses here for the.
Right, just businesses, right.
Special uses.
So, so, yeah, in the past, you know, a business could, you know, violate, and then they could pay some fines, but it wasn't probably even, it could have been.
It was fifteen hundred, it was fifteen hundred dollars one time.
Okay, that was, that's a big one.
It was Diamond Gyms.
Yeah.
Frank, well, would it be too laborious for Steph if, if the business came before us for a special use?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask a question.
Can you, um, state your name, please?
Oh, Sharon Glasshoff with Premier Commercial Realty.
Okay.
Um, the reason we're here is we got a letter that four fifty-five East Main Street was gonna be on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
For a special use permit, and we don't see it on.
Yeah, that one was canceled. Um, it's on the agenda, the agenda was posted last week. It's been rescheduled to September seventh.
September seventh.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Sorry. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Okay, so, so, um.
Hold on.
Yep.
A, a new notice went out last week as well, stating that September seventh was, okay, so it's out, it's out in circulation.
Okay.
Seven.
Two of those. If they applied for a special use, but then if the special use required them to fill out an application for each and every performance that they wanna have throughout the year or something like that, and then, uh, those, if, if they're in violation, would just be not granted? So they'd have to apply for a special use, and the special use would give them the ability to then submit applications, individual applications for every event that they wish to have?
I don't think we can, we can tell them what they could play on the side or what, we're just more concerned about the noise and the frequency.
That's not, so that's, that's different, like, when they were gonna have their, Aliano's big party in the street, that's canceled then. That was a special thing, and that's something you, they, they would talk to you about, and that's different. Okay, okay.
So I think the initial thought was, when we put this together, was we give them these special uses so that they could have their live music, and if they were bad actors, we could, um, cancel it, so we could say things like, what would cause a triggering of a cancellation? It would be like, if they get, you know, so many number of verified police noise complaints in a year or in a period, then they have to come and explain to the board why that happened.
The village board?
Yeah, the village board, I would say the village board. I think the village board would put the screws into them and then cancel their, you know, I don't think we should put language in, for example, this is not my opinion, but language that would automatically cancel it, I think that's not how we run our town. So I think it should be, you know, adjudicated more or less by the, the village board. They could, there could be a good reason, they could do, decide what they wanna do, but I think getting people coming in here and having to explain themselves, uh, you know.
As they should, cause I know who you're talking about.
Breaking their rules, you know, breaking their rules.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah.
You know, so, and then the board would have the power to cancel the special use.
Okay.
Right?
Right, is the, um, Franco, has the village attorney given, provided any warnings or concerns, uh, about it, cause any? Unless we do what, uh, the meeting I missed two times ago, uh, we, one of the people we issued a special use to came back before us just to give us a report on how things are going, correct, two meetings ago?
Well, she was asking for a transfer of a liquor license, actually.
Okay.
Actually increasing her liquor license.
Okay, um. I, I, I just wonder whether, my only concern is if, if, if the village board takes a special use away, is that going to trigger some type of a lawsuit that the village is going to be into with the, with the business owner, and whereas if we set the special use up with certain terms that, like, every semi-annually, they have to come back before either the board or before this commission to report on how things are going. I, I'm just trying to avoid a lawsuit down there.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I totally am behind avoiding lawsuits. So however, you know, the lawyers can structure it, um, you know, where do we get the objectives that we want?
So.
You could have the condition say must abide by section ninety-three eleven.
Right.
Of the village code. You know, unless, you know, if, if an applicant wants to perform later, instead of eleven P M on Friday or Saturday, then, um, they must get approval by the village board ahead of time.
Right.
You could set a condition like that, that's basically applicable to almost every situation for every different business.
Yeah.
So if you know you have an outdoor patio, you have a band, a really good band on Saturday, and you want them to go until midnight instead of eleven P M, you would ask for permission from the village administrator or the village, I would, I would say village board and/or administrator.
Your time is reasonable.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And it's a one-off thing, whereas every other weekend, you say the eleven P M, you just cite section ninety-three eleven in the code, which is noise, and that's something the board obviously agreed upon, because they just passed it two weeks ago.
And just in the, in the future, if a business were to come in that would, like, say, a live theater, like a comedy club or something like that, could they go for a special use that would go beyond the eleven P M, or would the village have to make, or would we have to make an amendment to allow that in some special use?
I don't know how that special use would be, because this would be applicable to only restaurants, tavern, and, right, with live entertainment.
Okay, so if there was strictly a comedy club, that wouldn't fall?
It sounds like a different.
Okay, yeah, this was the thing too, I, you know, I believe you were talking about the, 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 that extended their liquor license, I think that was at a board meeting, not. Not a commission meeting.
Right.
Board meeting.
Club, Club Cabana, if you watch the recording.
Well, no, no, I, I, I thought that there was, uh, the gal that we issued the tattoo.
Oh, yeah.
The, she came in for a report, not for.
We, what we did was, we just, the condition, the board wanted a ninety-day follow-up or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just got a head nod from the P Z H C that everything was.
Oh, okay, okay, very, very good.
But it's good that we're, we're talking about this Club Cabana thing, because it's very interesting, there are apparently, cause I, I heard about it the first time at the, um, you know, at the, the, the board meeting, and it's, uh, you know, a, a banquet hall now getting like a class A liquor license to be a bar. Which, like, why didn't that come to the P Z, you know, because that's a different land use now, and, you know, the chief brought it up, you know, like, you know, you get different traffic patterns and things like that.
That's not in town.
Previously approved special use long ago, I think it was approved straight to the board for some reason.
So is it an open tavern now?
They, they have a class A, so, uh, which means it could be a bar.
But the way they were describing it, it fits almost like what you were just talking about with the concert hall, because what they wanna do is have people drink there when they don't have an event.
Oh.
So it's gonna be, and they'll, like, have a band.
It's like a bar.
It's, it's, to me, it feels, seems almost like.
Banquet in a bar.
Feeling closer to, like, rock house. I mean, it's then a bar, because it's gonna be an open space with maybe a couple of high tops and a band, you know, plus stage and a P A system and stuff, so that I felt was, we, we need to start looking at those things different, and maybe add it. I know you hate adding classifications. And we don't have anything that, like, covers, you know, this nightclub, you know, music venue, there's nothing.
Is that considered?
Yeah, no, I, I don't mind adding classifications, I just, Franco and Chris, somebody's gotta administrate it, and, and the more things that get added, the, 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 the more laborious it becomes for the administration, and I, I just, uh, that's the only thing I, I, I fear.
Is that considered unincorporated?
No.
No, that's part of us. We annexed it ten years.
We would, we would discuss it if it was.
Right, so.
Yeah, guns in that, in that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like just this little pocket, I mean.
No, I know, I know, I know what you're saying, it's next to Gats and Guns.
The, the village had to annex down through there to get to Gats Guns, because they wanted. wanted the sales tax revenue coming out of it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, Gats and Guns, yeah, absolutely.
So, so, I guess, summarize what we've done so far is, we don't want to do anything illegal.
We can't.
We want to make sure that it's in close, is much in line with the existing noise ordinance, you know, with the hours and stuff like that. I think we don't want to have, like, complicated, confusing hours. It was something the board just fixed with some of the other things. And then I think we want to have something that, you know, tied to staying in compliance with the noise ordinance in order to maintain your special use.
Yeah, so, something that I wrote down based on the feedback is a condition that could automatically be slapped onto any restaurant, bar, or tavern that wants a special use would be noise to conform to section ninety-three dot eleven, section D of the village code noise ordinance, unless granted approval from village administrator and/or village board for permission to end at midnight on Friday and Saturday only, no more than one time per month per establishment. And, like, each month, you know, they can have their band if you want, something like that.
Okay.
Whereas it means every other day, you just have to follow the noise ordinance. But if you know you have something that's gonna be a big following and you want to end at midnight, this is a way of getting approval for that midnight.
So, yeah.
On Friday and Saturdays only.
Yeah. So, I'm cool with the extra, the extra, to go extra late if they want to do that. I mean, the board may be interested in that, that option. So, do we want to say anything, though, that, you know, staying in compliance with the, with the code, you know, we want to allow them to mess up a little bit. They can mess up, you know, there can be accidents, there can be, you know. Like, oh, if they get a noise violation, that shouldn't just get them canceled, like, if they get one.
I don't think one noise ordinance would prompt...
No.
...a bringing of a special use.
So, so you think that this way, it's just whenever, an arbitrary number that we would decide was too many?
I don't know that it would be arbitrary.
Yeah, that's, that's the point.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, it's more, it's more than one.
Well, you know, they, they have, they also hold liquor licenses, right? So, they want to make sure that they're following the code because their liquor license depends on it. I don't foresee it being a huge issue, right? And there's already a system in place of issuing warnings, then citations, and conversations with owners.
I've heard another resident suggest that this, you know, should be linked to the liquor license, but, you know...
You, you could put in the home rule, the village board could put the condition that, you know, obviously, a special use is going to be tied.
Yeah. I think it would then go to the liquor commission, you know.
Is, is this only a zoning violation, or is there also a police...
The police, the police have said to just follow the noise ordinance.
Yep.
To follow the noise ordinance. Yeah, so that, so they could issue a citation reviewable by the... Isn't, isn't the adjudication by the, you don't go, you don't go before the King County judge, you just go before the...
It's in-house.
Yes, the in-house, okay.
So, yeah, I would, yeah, I, I think of it more like, you know, you can get, like, speeding tickets, right? And we let people get their speeding tickets.
Parking tickets.
Yeah, parking tickets are, like, if you have a code violation at your house, you go, you don't go to the King County.
Yeah, 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 for adjudication, yes, yeah, that's all done in-house. But I'm thinking, like, the way I'd like to see this more be, right, is, you know, let's say a, a noise violation's like a, you know, a speeding ticket, and you pay it, and, you know, that's fine, you, you know, you do your thing. But if you get enough, you get your license suspended. I mean, that's the most...
Yeah, you could, you could, you could hold that against them, too, you know, no more than two or three noise ordinance citations within a twelve-month period.
Yeah, something like that is...
Once the consensus on it, because what you're saying is, there's no penalty for them just every Saturday getting a thousand dollar ticket when...
If they think they're right, you mean the business.
You're making five grand.
It's working to them, precedent of a business.
When you make five grand per hour.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
And they would have to, this business would have to be told by the police, hey, it's time to shut it down. Oh, it would be... Right, and then they would have to disobey that.
They usually, they usually do.
Well, they need to get this citation, which you see already takes, like, three calls.
Which...
Does it?
Yes.
But this, this is, I know it's what I've heard from, you know, like, when talking with people on the board, when they've talked to other people in town who love complaining about this, they, they feel like they complain and nothing gets done, it doesn't change. So, you know, we want to have some type of tool that could be used. I really don't want it to be overused.
No way.
I mean, this is part of our, the vibrancy of our town. I mean, people love them.
No more, no more than three noise ordinance citations generated by a third party, generated by an outside caller, not by the police or something, you're saying? It's not...
Well...
Yeah, yeah, somebody's gonna call it in.
I mean, I hate to steal something out of the states, but if you're issued a driver's license and you get a ticket, you have the ability to go fight that. Or, I guess, the state of Illinois gives you a school option.
Yeah.
Do a four-hour the first time and then...
Here we go.
Well, it's...
I would be tortured.
But if, if somebody ends up, it used to be the rule, I don't know if it still is, if you have three moving violations on your record, the state revokes your license.
Right, yeah, suspends.
Suspend.
Little mobile shredder, right, in this guy?
Yeah.
Frank, that goes too far.
What's that?
That goes too far.
Okay, okay.
So, that, yeah, so exactly, I can, you know, what I was thinking, so...
So, no more than three noise ordinance citation convictions? No more than... And then Frank's gonna come see you.
Frank's gonna do the noise ordinance, you know...
Yeah, Frank is gonna do it.
We're just sparring in there, it's just the whole time. Noise is unpleasant.
Captain.
I like this.
Okay.
Okay.
I think this, this is...
You could make a prompt. If you want to get out of that citation, it's by a thousand dollars.
Right. So, okay, so is there more that we want to talk about with this? Or I think there's a lot that we've already said that could be taken to draft something more comprehensive at this point.
How about any outdoor live entertainment must seek village staff review and approval for sound dampening purposes?
Right, is that outside of property line, or...
Well, no, it'd be outside, like a patio.
Okay, okay.
I like that, I like that completely. Yeah, for, like, new, for new...
So, like, if it's just a patio and they have a band and it's loud, right, obviously, you could go the route with the noise citation, but don't you want to not disturb your neighbors and maybe have a review at first or something if they're proposing outdoor venues? I don't, these are all just spitballing.
Yes, so, so, I mean, we have our current situation where I think, where our current bars, where everyone around them kind of knows how, how it works. But, yeah, like, for a new place that's opening up, you know, and now as a patio, we, we should, we should look at what that would do from a noise perspective.
Yeah, this would be, this would be for new applicants, exactly.
Yeah.
Because, like we said, when we first did this, existing bars would be more lenient to grandfathered in.
Yeah, 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 well, yes. And, you know, everyone who moved there, all the bars have been there longer than, like, almost everyone has been.
A thousand years.
Yeah, 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 but, you know, like, we, you know, we keep, you know, they talk about developing the property more to the, like, our business district more to the south, you know, and you start opening up stuff, you know, on the other side of seventy-two, that's gonna change, you know, change things a lot. So, I mean, I like the idea with the special use of, and we talked about this, I think, before, too, like, it being a special use, and us, you know, making sure that it's a safe place to have music. I mean, that there's, there's real value behind that aspect of it.
Yeah, and obviously, our attorneys will plop in general conditions, must abide by fire code and building regulations.
So, have extension cords all over the floor, you know. Put in, like, way more people than, yeah, way more people than should ever be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they'll do this type of stuff for sure, like, I know at Rosie's, you know, they could get, they bring in some people who set up a giant, you know, like a giant stage inside, which then takes, it's only, like, let's say, now, five people up there, but it takes half of their floor space.
For sure.
And then they put in the full number of people in half the space, right? Or that can happen. I don't know how you guys calculate the loss of floor space when it's maybe not available to people.
And then the other mistake is to put in...
Yeah.
But then is it, is it blocking an exit?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's have to do.
For sure.
Establishments, you know.[1646.66]